Meeting as they're holding their annual appreciation for committee members and commission members, so we hope to see you there.
And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Councilor Hyatt for being our liaison. She's been wonderful. We've been greatly empowered and embodied and wonderful things have happened since she's been here. Thank you very much. And I'd also like to give best wishes to Commissioner Nowitzki, who is on his way out and will be seen at the city council, city councillor table from now on. Congratulations. Okay, the consent agenda. We have approval of the October 22 minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion? Are there, actually, are there any amendments or changes that need to be made? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Excuse me. We are on to public forum. If you wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please fill out a speaker request form, which is back in the back, and you'll be recognized and to provide your public comments. I do not show anybody has done that so far.
Yeah, these are all free.
Okay, okay. So we do not have public forum, public comments this evening. So we will move on to the main event, which is a type two public hearing. Type two public hearings are decisions that are made by the Planning Commission after a public hearing. The decision may be appealed to the city council. This is Planning Action PA-T2-2024-00054, an application for an outline plan approval for a 15-lot performance standards option, PSO subdivision for 38 residences, site plan approval, site plan review approval, and a variance to driveway width and a tree removal permit. In an email that we received today, the applicant has asked that Area 7 and all associated entitlement requests be withdrawn from the application, and that the Planning Commission consider only Areas 4, 5, and 6, and all the entitlements for those areas. The owner is PDK Properties, and the applicant is Tailored Elements Construction Company. This is Phase 3 of Kestrel Park subdivision. The comprehensive plan designation is North Mountain Plan. The zoning is North Mountain-Multifamily. Assessor's map is 391E04AD, and tax lots are 8,600, 4,700, and 7,800. Before we begin the public hearing, I will ask commissioners if they have had any ex parte contact or done any site visits. Commissioner Nowitzki?
No ex parte, no site visit.
Commissioner McCracken-Jen? No site visits, no ex parte. Commissioner Perkins?
No ex parte, no site visit.
And Commissioner Phillips?
No ex parte, and I did a site visit this morning.
And I have done a site visit, and I did have two ex parte contacts with people who were letting me know that this was on the agenda, and when I mentioned that I was on the Planning Commission already, and they, I told them that I couldn't talk to them about this, and that was the end of our conversation. I am not aware of any challenges for bias, prejudgment, or personal interest. So I will now, yeah?
If I could just note for the record that Eric Herron, Commissioner Herron, and Commissioner Kinkarin, not present this evening, but have recused themselves from any deliberation or discussion on this application.
Yes, thank you. I will now open the public hearing. And first of all, I will acknowledge a number of submittals, namely, the first one is an email from Richard Kinzinger, dated December 5, 2024, titled "Written testimony re Kestrel Park III development", with 132 signatures. The second one is email from Nancy and Mark Abel, dated December 5, 2024, titled "Kestrel Full Side Development". The third one is an email from David Bronckel, dated December 9, 2024, titled "Kestrel Park Planning Application Comment". The fourth is an email from Mark Knox, dated 12, December 10, 2024, titled "Kestrel Park III, Area 7 Withdrawal", and something that we received this evening, which is from Richard Kinzinger, Ashland Municipal Code citations from Chapter 18.3.5. Aaron, will you please make the staff presentation?
Good evening, Chair Werner and Planning Commission. Pleasure to be before you again. With such an introduction, some of this is going to be a little bit repetitive, but this is an application for outline plan approval for Kestrel Park Phase 3. This is a map of the city giving you the general area of the North Mountain Neighborhood Plan and a slightly more close-up view of it. For those who are not aware, the North Mountain Neighborhood Plan is a master plan that was adopted in 1997 for the entirety of the North Mountain Neighborhood Plan area. That is specified and codified at 18.3.5 and requires performance standard subdivision for any project that creates more than three lots. These are the adopted maps and the land use ordinance of the North Mountain Neighborhood Plan, showing both the North Mountain area and then the secondary zoning. And that secondary zoning is shown here from the GIS. It's worth pointing out that the green color, which is this whole section through here, is North Mountain Multifamily. Over here is North Mountain Residential 1.75, and this is North Mountain Residential 1.5. These are both single-family zones. I use air quotes because, of course, with House Bill 2001 and whatnot, they're all eligible for duplexes. The numbers have changed slightly from when this was originally put together with the withdrawal of Area 7, so it will, what's being proposed now is a 13-lot performance standards subdivision with 16 multifamily site design review and three shared-wall single-family homes. The application also includes a variance to driveway width from the North Mountain standards, and we'll discuss that later. This screenshot is from application materials that were submitted during Phase 1, which was in September of 2018. You can notice that this is all built out as was originally proposed, this being the Phase 1 portion, and this being the Phase 2 portion, which is frequently referred to as the Kestrel cottages, and this is the subject area of the present application. The subject property is 2.27 acres, and it currently has those four roads, Nandina, Stone Ridge, in North Mountain, pardon me, all terminating to them and are proposed to be interconnected to the street plan, again, that was proposed and approved with the original phases of the subdivision. This is an aerial image showing the same subject property and the build-out of Phases 1 and 2 of the Kestrel Park subdivision. And this is the preliminary plat that was submitted with the application for outline subdivision. It's worth noting that the surveyor included an error here by showing this as a private alley, whereas in all the other site plans we're going to look at, you'll see that these properties actually abut each other and have a shared parking area that will have reciprocal access easements. So while this will be a dedicated public alleyway, the interconnection through the site design review area will be private property on reciprocal easements. In terms of those previous phases, we're just going to look at them pretty briefly. This is from the survey plat for Phase 1. You can see it included the construction of Nandina, Stone Ridge, and Kestrel Parkway down to Nest Box Way. And then, following that, Phase 2 platted the cottages again, and all of those take access off of this alley along with those single-family homes that front Kestrel. So the present proposal is a PSO subdivision, and again, that's a requirement in the North Mountain Plan, and residential site review for both multifamily development and shared common wall, single-family housing. Again, this is the plat we just looked at, and as we mentioned, Area 7 is being excluded or withdrawn from the application, and so really what we're looking at here is the proposal. To go back to the plat real quick, it's a little bit small to see here, but what this is showing is that presently there's a 16-foot dedicated alleyway along the west side of this subdivision, and there's a proposed additional four feet of dedication, creating a 20-foot wide alley, which is the standard for the North Mountain Neighborhood Plan. Along the north of the project, there's additional dedications both here and here, so that the alley on the north side of the property also becomes 20 feet wide. And this road network is really an extension and a manifestation of what was proposed and approved in Phase 1. This is a close-up of the subject property and the zoning, along with the size of each zone. As this project has tracked through each of the phases, we've had to make sure that the application is consistent with the required zoning and density. The North Mountain Neighborhood Plan has a minimum density that requires that the projects fulfill between 75% to 110% of the calculated base density, and that table is in the staff report detailing how many units in each zone was in each phase. Obviously, that number's a little bit off now with the withdrawal of Phase 7, but it's still within the allowed densities, and there'll be a condition of approval, as there has been in previous phases, that will require that when Area 7 does come through, it'll be required to meet the base zoning for the zone.
Just a quick question. Is that an error that I'm looking at on the map? Is it not NMR 1.75, not 17.5?
I believe that technically should be R-1-75.
Okay.
So yes, that would be a typo.
Thank you.
The application includes detailed civil plans, including all of the installation of public facilities, including grading plans, the road network, sewer and water facilities. And again, there's an additional dedication, as I mentioned, here on the eastern side for that alley to become 20 feet wide. A lot of the concerns that were brought up had to do with alley access as it relates to Area 7. With Area 7 being withdrawn, I'm really not going to speak to those issues there. As it relates to site design review, the buildings that are subject to site design review would be all of Area 6, as these are multifamily dwellings. And then because these homes here on 41 and 42, 45 and 46, and 32 and 33 are shared common wall, single family, they are subject to site design review as well. In an attempt not to steal the thunder of the applicant, I haven't included all of the architectural renderings, but briefly, this is a rendering from Area 4, showing lots 32 and 33. You can see how the buildings are designed to respond to the topography with the upper and lower levels. This is Area 5, facing Stone Ridge, the paired garages, and again, the upper and lower levels really responding to the topography of the site. This is Area 5, again, on the opposite side of Area 5. And then this is one of the two views of Area 6, showing those four multifamily buildings. And then this, again, is Area 6, showing that common parking area with the three different buildings on four different lots. The application also includes a request for tree removal, which is in Area 7. Because Area 7 is being withdrawn, we don't really need to consider this tree removal at this time. And with the definition of tree, as is adopted in the code, staff actually had some question about whether this was a regulated tree, but that issue is actually moot at this point, since we won't be approving it. And then with regard to the variance that's being requested, the public works standards for a driveway requires a driveway be a minimum of 12 feet wide and a maximum of 18 feet wide. This conflicts with the North Mountain area requirement that a single-family home be serviced by a nine-foot-wide driveway, and that shared driveways be 12 feet wide. So in the present request, the driveways that are being requested are these shared driveways here for Area 4 and Area 5, which are requesting the public works maximum of 18 feet, which essentially is nine feet per lot without any sort of spacing. And then, again, Area 7's not being considered at this time, but that, those were being requested to have 12 feet, which meet the public works minimum of 12. Because this is site design review of a parking area with more than seven parking spaces, it actually requires a 20-foot driveway cut, and that standard is not, doesn't need a variance because it's a requirement of the code. The application materials show how a shared drive can share these lots, and that really a 12-foot shared wide driveway, when you look at how much cars have increased in size from 1997, when these standards were adopted, staff feels comfortable that an 18-foot shared driveway is an acceptable departure from that standard, considering nine foot per lot is the standard. Again, there were several issues raised on public comment, that some had to do with consistency with the neighborhood. Staff would reiterate that this is a multifamily area that does need to hit a certain zone. And again, with the withdrawal of Area 7, we don't need to dwell on what the current proposal was for that area there. And then, finally, there are two additional conditions of approval that we crafted considering the withdrawal of Area 7. And as I mentioned before, one of those is that a requirement that the density hit the requirement for the standards of the North Mountain Neighborhood Plan. And secondly, that all proposed public improvements, including sidewalk, curb gutter, park row, landscaping, and the alleys, including those surrounding Area 7, be installed prior to the recording of the final plat. And then finally, as are set out in the staff report, these are the approval criteria as they relate to outline plan, site design review, variance, and tree removal criteria. Again, the tree removal isn't coming out anymore. And I'm more than happy to take any of those in greater detail if there are questions that relate to them.
Do you have any questions for Aaron? Sure.
Aaron, I'm not completely across the density expectations that are built into the North Mountain Plan, so this is sort of an open question. But with the removal of 7, which was carrying most of the density in this development proposal, is the overall plan requirement, I'll call it that, of maintaining a certain level of density still being met? Or are we pushing this down the road, and it's going to have to be addressed in a very concentrated way at a later date?
No. In fact, the requirements for meeting the minimum density on Area 7 are actually fairly low. The applicant's intention is to come back with a plan that may be a few units lower than what was proposed initially. They were proposing 12 units in the multifamily building.
Right.
And then the two single-family homes. I would ask the applicant to speak to that a little more, but really, so long as there is a fourplex there, they would meet the standard as has been crafted through Phase 1, Phase 2, and now the current phase.
And the density requirements, if I understood what I was reading earlier, is really in relation to the whole of the area. Am I correct?
That's correct, yeah. The, all three of these phases have taken a look at the entirety of the R1 and the North Mountain Multifamily. And in fact, you'll notice here that this was considered, this was discussed in the approval of the cottage housing as a, effectively a density transfer, because some of the single-family houses were in the multifamily, and some of this multifamily development was in the single family. And so that's all been detailed out in staff reports and findings in each phase.
Okay, thank you.
To ask the same question, perhaps just a little bit differently. If there were approval of the three that we are looking at today, what would be the density requirement for 7?
I'm sorry, I don't know, I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Well, so, I mean, can take, you know, taking the entirety of the property.
Yep.
And its requirements, if we're looking at three of the four, what is the burden upon the fourth lot?
Sure. So on page 7 of the staff report, it details that the requirements for the development in the North Mountain Multifamily Zone be between 37 and 54 units. The remaining allowed, after you consider the construction of those units in Phases 1 and 2, is 40. So while it says proposed in Phase 3 is 38, which was correct, now what is proposed is effectively 22. So 40 less 22 would then be the maximum they could continue to build out to.
So 18?
Correct. They could build up to 18. But the more important part is, again, this is a minimum, and so on the other side of that equation is 37 less the 14, less the 22, and that would be the minimum to meet the standard.
Okay.
So to answer your question, the 37, which is the minimum that they would need to hit, it's 37.4, less the 14 that are constructed in that zone, leaves a remainder of 23.4. Subtracting out the 22 that are now proposed in this phase, two lots in Area 7 would satisfy that minimum. 1.4, but you can't build a .4, so it would need to be two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, anybody else have any questions for Aaron? Okay. Thank you very much. And would the applicant like to come, would the applicant like to come forward?
You want to use your PowerPoint?
Just use the arrow keys?
What's that?
Arrow keys?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Mark Knox. I'm representing the applicants tonight. I'm a land use planner. I actually live in this neighborhood, 670 Nippenthe Road. It's been actually kind of challenging to go walk the dogs these days. But I'm actually very, very happy and proud to present this, this application. I've, want to present yourself, sorry.
Oh, sure. Yeah, my name's Kyle Taylor. I own Tailored Elements Construction. Yeah, drug Mark out of semi-retirement to help us out with this project, and we're thankful for it. Thank you.
Yep, yep. And the reason I agree to that, I'm just going to say, preface this, is that I was hired by the City of Ashland over 30 years ago to actually start this project, design it, and help the planning staff, put it all together, and I kind of feel like there's some obligation to finish it too. So, okay, here's Kestrel Park, Phase 3. This is back in the day. Can you help me blow this up?
Yes.
If you know what I mean. This is probably, I think, 93 or so. And, yeah, thank you so much. And it basically shows 50 or so acres of the whole North Mountain area with Bear Creek going through it. The zoning back in the day was half acre, and we were very concerned that it was just going to be sprawl-type of development. And so we created this master plan, North Mountain Plan. It's outlined right there. Again, outlined is today with the star there in the middle is the subject property. Little more close-up. This, this particular slide I wanted to include because it really shows the concentration of density versus the half-acre type of sprawl-type of hodgepodge-type of development. And so, you know, we pride ourselves in this community in the state of Oregon to have really tight, delineated urban growth boundaries, again, anti-sprawl, and so this plan was created. Aaron went over these slides. This is basically the zoning with the, with the subject property right in the middle of it. Kind of wanted to really point out this. I highlighted with a dash black, that's all the North Mountain, excuse me, Mountain Meadows Retirement Community. The, the white, or they, I could say the east side of North Mountain itself, that retirement community on that side, that was actually being proposed at the same time the city was going through an adoption of the master plan. And its principal design and a lot of the considerations were really reflective of what we are proposing to do as, as staff back in the day. And, but kind of what happened is the, as the developer was, we're pretty successful with the Mountain Retirement Center, and they jumped across the street, and they started developing in that area in, I guess that's green, because I'm really colorblind, but this area, right?
Doesn't work.
Okay, so where the arrows are pointing straight up, so much for that. Thank you, Brandon. And, and so, you know, again, as a retirement community, there was a lot of things that were happening where they were solely looking at, and looking at single-level housing. And I think a little bit of that, that little bit of that today, you will hear some conflicts and concerns about compatibility and so forth. A lot of that relates to what that particular use is, as a retirement community, as a single-family zone, versus on the other side, multifamily housing. So it's just, this is just intended to kind of show the mass, if you will, on all the adjoining lots. As you can see, there's, they're quite full for single-family houses, pretty much go lot line to lot line in many cases. And this particular slide, I wanted to show the assessor's map, because it shows the actual property boundaries. And you're going to hear a little bit tonight about alleys, and I'm, I'll expand on that a little bit more. But the alleys adjacent to the property are all public, will be public, the ones that are expanded, and will meet the design standards, excuse me, the street standards for the North Mountain Plan as well. This is the original topo map. I wanted to include this because you see all the fine lines. That's basically what we're contending with, is the challenges to build housing. And that's why you'll see a lot of our housing is kind of stepped, to work with the, with the topography. Areas 4, 5, 6, and 7, as illustrated, this is the site plan, as I'm sure you have in your packet. Area 7 was excluded, and I feel, I feel obligated right now to pause and let everybody know why we removed Area 7, and primarily because one of the neighbors made a comment about how unattractive Area 7 was, some of the, some of the buildings. We worked so hard to squish the building down adjacent to the alley, that we kind of created a single, long, single-profile roof. And the comment was one of those that, Kyle, I agree. Just like, yeah, I agree. It's not a criteria-based issue. It is something that we are proud of, or not proud of, and so we decided, pause, kick this can down the road, we're going to come back, and we're going to come back with a little bit different design. It might actually be higher in some cases, but we're probably going to try to start looking at transferring a little bit of the density around Area 7. So it has a win-win potential as far as, you know, the issues of traffic on an alley, that kind of thing, and design, so. Area 4, the, that's right there at the bottom there. It's basically two units. That's the front elevation of Area 4, and the back elevation at the bottom. It's a daylight basement. The, this is a picture looking up from Area 4. Area 4 would just be beyond that sidewalk, right up in there. You can't really see it that well, but the building right above it, the residence right above it, is this kind of same design. It has a single-level, excuse me, a floor that jets It has a single level, excuse me, a floor that jets out from its access point off of that same alley that we were talking about in area seven. And then there's a daylight type of basement. It is very similar design. Very obvious when you get on these hillsides how that pattern's going to play out. Area five, that's where the star is up there. This is the adjoining houses to area five, the existing adjoining houses to area five. Quite tall. I would say those are in the probably thirty-foot range at the peak, easy. This is an adjoining unit that's proposed, very compatible, two-story, low roof pitches, five and twelve, five and a half and twelve probably. This is another adjoining house. This actually sits up facing Patton. And this would be the adjoining house to it. We looked at this house. You can see all the windows and see the deck out there. I mean, that particular property owner, that designer, really went to great efforts to create views and preserve views, right? And here, we wanted to make sure, we're respectful of that. That's why we have this right next to that. And so those kind of things, I think, you know, I just want the neighborhood to understand, we were conscientious of that. These are units on the south side of that unit I just showed you. These are very similar if you have a chance to go down the streets of Patton, and Stone Ridge for that matter, Plum Ridge in some cases. This is a very, very consistent pattern. Area six, I think this is, I think, you know, probably the area that would probably get the most discussion tonight. Again, this is a two-story house, probably a good twenty-eight feet in height elevated from the street. And this is, these are the building elevations that'll be adjoining it. These are apartments. There's going to be a total of sixteen here. There'll be one over one along Patton. And then in the back, there's two buildings, each with four units. All these units are six hundred or less. It's pretty rare in Ashland. As the community knows, we are literally, you know, begging for housing to come in. And in every conversation I have in this community about what are we going to do? We need housing for employees. We need housing for retirees even. You know, we are very, very short, and I could list probably fifteen documents that the city has done in the last ten years alone that all talk about what do we need? Small houses, small rental houses in particular. So we're very happy because we think that, you know, we're providing a need. These are not affordable units to build. An affordable unit to build as an apartment would look much different than this. Would be very plain, no porches, no creativity whatsoever. That's what's affordable. These are nice because they're respecting the pattern of the neighborhood. But they are rentals, and they are going to cost the applicants a lot to build. Again, context, the house on the left is, I'm sure Mr. Runkel will speak tonight, is, I can't tell. I mean, it looks like there's a garage and then a pretty good-sized storage area above the garage. And this is probably about, I'm going to say sixteen feet, plus maybe a little bit more at the peak. And then the other house on the other side is clearly two stories. What we're getting here is, this is from Plum Ridge, looking down the alley. That house I just, Mr. Runkel's house, is right on the left-hand side. It's a twelve-foot paved surface. And the house on the right is probably about sixteen, seventeen feet. And this is kind of looking back the other direction. As you can see, as it comes down the alley, those buildings get taller and a little bit more mass. That's actually right at the end of the current alley. And as you can see, those are two full floors. And then, of course, there's a step back of a third story. Those, you can't see it, but the pitches are on those are also five and twelve, exactly what we're doing. These face that. These units face those units, right? And I wanted to point out, this one has, can't use my pointer. This one has a nice little porch that, it creates a little alleyscape, a nice environment to walk. And this, this plan shows that too. We're wanting to book in, if you will, that alley and create a little, a nice environment to utilize as a pedestrian. I circled these windows in this plan because this faces Mr. Runkel's house. We originally, I mean, again, I've had, I've had four or five meetings with lots of people and with big neighborhood meetings. And the original plan was, we had this elongated, elongated set of buildings all behind those two houses that are now on Plum Ridge. They had decks off the back. They had big glass, sliding glass doors. Have the meeting, hear the complaints, agree that that's, you know, let's figure out maybe a little bit better appropriate or more sensitive type of design. So we broke up that one long mass. We lost density by doing that, but we broke up that mass and did it two buildings. And now what faces that particular property is that side where the windows are. Those are transom windows. You have to literally stand on your feet to kind of look down. And between the two buildings, that allows light and air to kind of pattern what the single-family houses to the east provide. Alleys, this is a shot of the Aurora District. All our alleys in town are pretty much sixteen feet. This project, or the master plan, was really patterned after what really works in Ashland, right? The Aurora District was a classic example. In fact, all our four national registered districts have sixteen-foot alleys. It's one of the primary components of them all. The alleys, the current alleys in the North Mountain Plan, this one, there are sixteen feet. The North Mountain Plan calls for twenty. I can't recall why these were sixteen, but these are sixteen, and they function very well, just like the rest of town. We are proposing twenty because that's the standard. But I wanted to kind of illustrate to not just the planning commission, but our community, that at sixteen feet, and this has like thirty-eight units off of these alleys, it functions extremely well. Again, the property with the star, all those little red circles, those are all alleys. Those are all sixteen feet. Again, when we propose our development, or Kyle's development, they will expand to twenty feet. Okay? Hard to see here, but those little yellow lines represent all the existing alleys in the master plan area. The blue are proposed, and I kind of tried to put some green in there, which shows the links to the pedestrian paths. This is Ashland Street Standard, which calls for sixteen-feet alleys. Again, talks about, you know, the importance of alleys, their dimension. There's a cross-section that shows twelve and two and two, is that ten, twelve and two and two? Is that right? Sixteen? And then here's the North Mountain Standard. It's twelve, four, and four. And those are buffers, right? They could be shrub, they could be whatever, as long as there's a buffer. And a lot of that is kind of really related for just people being able to open the doors or swing a little bit, a little extra, and aesthetics. This is kind of a list rates. This is a notice that was sent out to the neighbors, and it kind of shows the dates. We have had lots of meetings, like I said. You know, the end result, I took this this morning. We were on our walk. And I think the end result is that I see so many people walking and enjoying the neighborhood, and couldn't be prouder. This is a shot of the Kestrel Park Extension. It's the natural area. This was dedicated with the Kestrel Park Master Plan, right, in phase one. Great walk, great nature kind of hike within the city limits. And really what it did is, can't use my pointer, but it preserved Kitchen Creek, Bear Creek, all that riparian area. And that's, you know, that's what you get with a new traditional neighborhood that has all these nice connections, or mass and scale are very compatible, and the use of alleys are really truly used. So that's my presentation. I probably went over. But if you have any questions of myself, or if Kyle wants to add anything, or answer any questions, I'm sure we'd love to.
Do you want to add anything?
I don't think I have anything to add. No.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Any commissioners have questions? Greg, do you have any questions?
I do not. I appreciate the presentation.
Okay. Let's move on to members of the public then. Thank you very much. I have three members of the public who signed up. Lee Bowman, Robert Tower, and Lola Egan. And you have five minutes each. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Lee Bowman. I reside at 554 Mountain Meadows Drive. And I had a whole presentation to make tonight, and it comprised mostly had to do with area seven. So that kind of takes, there's really no point in making all the comments I made, except there is.
Can you turn it on to?
Ah, okay. Thank you. I had no idea. All right. Anyway, was here to talk about area seven and some, a little bit about area six. But there's one point I did want to bring up that has us all confused, is how the alley got the name Mariposa Court. I've lived there for twenty-five years. It's never had that name. There is a Mariposa Court already on the other side of Plum Ridge Drive, and it's a private street. And it's confusing the neighbors, something awful, when they get a notice about building twelve units on Mariposa Court. So I hope somehow that will get straightened out in the references. I have no idea where, I know it's on the city map. I don't know how it got on the city map. It was not in the original subdivision. With that, I really, nothing else I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Taylor? Robert Tower? Excuse me.
Yes, I'm Robert Tower. I live at eight twelve Plum Ridge Drive. And my comments were specific to area seven, so at this time I will withdraw any comments I have to make.
Okay. Thank you very much. Lola Egan?
My name is Lola Egan. I live at eight thirty-six Pavilion Place in Mountain Meadows. And likewise, my comments were to address area seven, and I have nothing to add.
Oh, we thank you for showing up. Thank you. And Barbara Patridge?
Hi, my name is Barbara Patridge. I live at seven nine four Kestrel Parkway. And I'm wanting some clarification on approval that was made in nineteen ninety-seven. It's now twenty-seven years later. And I don't know what, how the commission deals with that. It seems like an extraordinarily long amount of time. And then my second comment is that I live in a neighborhood where we have double garages in our homes that front on Kestrel Parkway. But we back up to the Kestrel Cottages subdivision, which has carports. My neighbor and I went out yesterday and measured the width of that alleyway. It is twenty-two feet wide. And I have been down some of the sixteen-foot-wide alleyways in Ashland, and they're not adequate. And I know when I'm, when we're leaving our parking area and our garage, and there's opposing traffic from the carport, that it's very crowded with twenty-two feet, you know, wide area. Secondly, the carports that are built in the Kestrel Cottages subdivision are really short. So short that only subcompact cars can park there. Otherwise, a standard-sized car, I don't mean a minivan or anything, but I would say a standard-sized Toyota Camry, you know, sticks out about four feet, four to six feet. And that the length of the existing carports is really inadequate. And if you walk down the alleyway, the cars just stick out of their parking places. So those are my concerns.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Your first concern was on the original application approvals were in nineteen ninety-seven? Okay.
That's what was said earlier, and I just wonder how long does the approval last? I mean, that's a long length of time.
Basically forever.
Really?
The nineteen ninety-seven reference was to the adoption of the North Mountain Neighborhood Plan by ordinance. And so that codified a section of the land use ordinance, and it will stay in effect until it manifests.
Until when?
Well, it'll stay on the books effectively forever. But once the last property develops, it really won't have much applicability yet. But it effectively has the force of law as an ordinance.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes. I don't agree with that, but I hear what you're saying. Thank you.
Okay, so that's the public comment. We have another one? Melissa Adams, please.
I'm Melissa Adams, and I live at eight oh six Kestrel Parkway. And I just wanted to say, you know, I love the neighborhood. I love the plan. My concern is for evacuation after the fire, the recent fire. The plan to not put Nevada through, I think, is something that should be revisited with the city and making sure with more people that are coming in that we have adequate access for evacuation. Because there's only one way in and one way out right now. And even with these streets going through, you have to still get through Mountain Meadows, so they don't really add any access out. So that's my concern, is evacuation and maybe if some other additional things like Nevada could be put through. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Somebody's coming forward.
Earlier, it was mentioned that...
Excuse me. Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Maggie Thompson. I live at eight six three Plum Ridge, on the corner of Nandina and Plum Ridge. And earlier it was mentioned, when the shocking news was that you're taking area seven out of consideration. I thought we were going to be told why that happened. I don't think that occurred, what the explanation for that was. And then I needed a little bit more clarification on, we talked about this some, that there was a minimum of dwellings that needed to be put in that new area, part three. And kind of maybe clarify what's going to happen with number seven, with the little seven area. Is that going to be like, oh, gosh, we need sixty-four houses in there? Not really. I know it wouldn't be that. But how many are going to be required to fill that in? Because, you know, we may end up with even more than we had before.
I think Mark Knox did address why he was withdrawing area seven tonight. And Aaron, do you want to talk about the? do you want to talk about the density?
The density again for Area 7?
Yeah.
So, the condition of approval will be that Area 7 will need to develop at a density consistent with the plan. And again, it's going to depend a lot on what type of application the applicant wants to bring before us. They've indicated that, based on some of the changes that they're expecting to make, that they may drop a unit or two. But again, they're in the process of revisiting that design. In terms of meeting the standard, anything between two lots to 18 dwelling units would meet that standard based on the acreage in the previous phases. So, at a minimum, Area 7 would need to turn into two residential lots, which would then be free to develop with either a single home or two homes, or up to 18 dwelling units.
Okay. So, we can safely assume that 18 is the maximum number of units?
I would safely assume it's less than that, because the plan that was before us was for 12 units with two single-family houses. Six of those were under 500 square feet, so that changes the density just a little bit. But I wouldn't expect to see anything greater than what was before us and has been withdrawn.
Okay. Is that clear?
I had one, yes, thank you. That's better. And I had one other little thing. When you were showing the map of downtown Ashland and the alleys in between, all of the houses, I believe, except for the little teeny-weeny alley shacks, have an access from a street to get to their home. And I think it appears that in this development, there will be some houses that the alley is their only access. Is that true?
The code requires that when alley access is available, that vehicle access come off the alley and not off the street frontage. So, in infill development in town, it's not uncommon to actually take away a driveway that has street frontage and require people to take alley access. In this application, the only existing alley was the one that was adjacent to, well, there was the alley to the north, which is being expanded to meet the standard. And then, Area 7 was going to be adjacent to that existing alley. So, that effectively obligates them to use that alley for vehicle access.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Anybody else?
Just may real quick. I just moved in.
And your name is?
My name is Jeff Askanaz, and I live 911 Patton. And I just moved in. So, this is all a shock to me. Anyway, what's the timing of this construction, and what will it do to our neighborhood? And if we're adding on to alleys, are we not going to have any access to the alley while it's being constructed? That's all I needed to know.
Okay. Let me turn to staff and see what they think.
I would defer to the applicant in terms of their construction phasing and how that might occur.
Okay.
And they have an opportunity during rebuttal to answer any questions.
That's true. Sure, come on up. All you have to do is introduce yourself.
My name, excuse me. My name is Ron Vandevort, 583 Nandina Street, adjacent to this development. My concern is that Nevada Bridge. Evacuation is a critical part of this whole thing. And why we're not talking more about getting back at that bridge project, I don't understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. My understanding is one of the conditions of approval that staff is proposing is that the developer will sign a local improvement district in favor of an LID to, so that property owners then would be obligated to pay for a part of the bridge over the Bear Creek. But I turn to staff about why it's delayed.
So, the, there was previously a grant that the city had applied for to assist in the bridge crossing. At that period of time, there was a council decision based on public testimony, largely from individuals in this neighborhood, that did not want to see a bridge crossing at that time in that location. And alternatively, the grant funds were to locate a bridge over, near Tolman Creek Road. However, that bridge crossing is still on our transportation system plan. There were discussions about the size of the bridge, whether it permitted vehicular access, or bike and pedestrian access, and emergency vehicles. Those design considerations would be done at a future time when, again, the city is looking at fulfilling that capital improvement for the transportation system plan. The code, the condition of approval that Chair Verner, that you mentioned, relates to that all the properties within this area had, as part of their development, signed a, an agreement for a local improvement district, so that they would pay a proportional share towards those improvement costs when the city does eventually move forward with that capital project. It's not in the near-term plan, but the transportation system plan is being evaluated by Public Works at this time and over the next two years. And through that process, concerns over evacuation have already been identified as a priority. And so, that question will be revisited, both by the Transportation Committee, the Planning Commission as part of review of the transportation system plan, and ultimately, the City Council.
Okay. Okay. Doug?
So, if I could just ask a clarifying question on that. If we have all the residents of North Mountain signing up for an LID, I believe it's called, is it, has it truly been left so open that it might be pedestrian versus vehicle?
That was the discussion that occurred regarding the grant that the city had obtained initially.
Right.
You know, I think through the transportation system plan is where that gets defined. The LID was that a bridge crossing, and I think it was for vehicular bridge crossing, when the LID was initially identified. I would say that the city has not yet formed a local improvement district. And as part of forming that district, it would incorporate what the proportional share is based on the other funding available for a bridge crossing.
And what would be the trigger to form that LID?
The capital improvement plan for the TSP moving forward with development of a bridge.
So, then residents of that neighborhood would want to be at any transportation planning meeting in order to make certain that that was brought up?
Yes.
Here we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. You have more meetings in your future. Would the applicant, seeing nobody else from the audience, would the applicant like to make a rebuttal?
I don't know if it's a rebuttal. It's more of a clarification. And an apology, again, about Area 7. That, you know, I hope when we get done with Area 7, everybody looks back and goes, good idea to pause. Let's see. Yes, 2 to 18? You know, those units were so small to begin with. I don't know how we're going to get, you know, I think we had the 12 and the 2, 14. I mean, we could actually increase it a little bit. But I think what would probably happen is just, just looking at dimensionally and kind of mass, is that they probably would be, again, a movement or transfer of density from the top to the bottom, from, from Mariposa Court to down to Patton. It would kind of change the product, which would be, instead of a single-family house type of design, it could be a little bit more attached housing at the bottom, just transferring it down the hill. But again, I think that there's, I just, I just think there's probably a better design that is going to eventually come out of it. And, and I'm not going to promise. I'm not going to promise anything. First of all, it's his decision. But it could, we could add a story or two to really help the diversity of that element, that design. But we don't know yet. We just don't know yet. And the fact that all these people are here, and they don't want to hear that, we're probably not going to do it, right? I mean, that's just beating our head against the wall. And speaking of that, you know, yes, the bridge and the LID, it's been hard. I mean, it's always hard for the developer to be in between neighborhood and transportation plans, such as the bridge. I was very supportive of the bridge. A lot of people in this particular neighborhood were opposed to it, and at the same time, you know, want it now. And I'm just going to say, get out there, talk to your counselors, get it on the capital improvement list. And we're all going to have to pay a share of it, right? I mean, all the neighbors are within that LID, and they're going to benefit. And they're going to be a small fraction, where they're going to end up having to help pay, if, as long as we don't get a big old grant again, like we at one point had from, I believe it was ODOT. But the, the more, you know, the more development that occurs, that proportion that Brandon was talking about, and it goes down for everybody. So, long story short, I'm very supportive of the bridge eventually going over as well. But, you know, we meet, you know, the, we're not, nothing's at capacity with what we're proposing. We've had traffic engineers look at intersections and, and turning radiuses and so forth. And we comply. We're not, we're not exceeding any capacity of it whatsoever. Let me just, give me a chance to kind of look through, please?
I'll jump in while you're looking.
Thank you.
Just a couple of notes. Several people brought up the concept of evacuation and the bridge. And fully appreciate that. Understand that it is not our desire to build an unsafe community either. Just to put on record, that is not our goal. I agree with Mark that I would be in support of the bridge as well. So, that is absolutely something that would be on our, on our to-do list. Jeff, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name, asked a question about the timing of construction and the alley access and access to it during that construction period. Timing is, obviously, has a lot to do with this body, and then figuring out Area 7. But our target would be to move as quickly as practical. So, if that was a more defined answer, that would be probably sometime early to mid 2025. The access during construction, we work pretty hard to work with our neighbors. It doesn't do any good to, I feel like I'm talking behind my back. So, we work pretty hard to communicate with our neighbors. When we know that we've got a paving truck coming in that day, maybe we'll take half the alley and direct traffic out one way, work on that half, flip it over the next day, so that everybody still has an opportunity to move, and try to communicate with people a few days in advance. So, for some reason, we need to park on the street for a day while something's happening, we're doing that. So, we understand people have lives, and we don't want to be the hindrance to that. And we want to be as good a neighbor as we can. So, I hope that answers your question.
Just last, I'm going to address Mrs. Adams' comments. Again, it relates to, you know, emergency, ingressygress. You know, maybe it's just insinuated that we have this pattern layout where all the streets are connected. And the proposal is, we're adding pretty much, you know, whatever, we're adding more access points through Nandina, through Mountain Meadows Drive, out. And so, you know, right now, if you look at what's there, everything has to funnel pretty much up Fair Oaks Drive, right? I mean, everything's pretty much that way. You know, you can go way out of your way, and go up Nevada, and all the way around that odd, turning radius up there. But now, all of a sudden, we're, we're filling in the neighborhood and making those streets connect. It just, that's just going to provide more options to spread traffic and more opportunity for ingress or egress of any kind, including, you know, for emergency vehicles.
Mark, there's only two places to get out though.
Excuse me.
Nandina doesn't...
Excuse me. Excuse me. Go ahead, Mark.
That's all I was going to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your further comments. Does the Planning Commission have any comments or questions for the applicant?
I have none.
Did you have a question?
Because we, my name again is Robert Tower, 812 Plum Ridge Drive. Because we segued into discussion about the bridge, I'd just like to make one brief comment. I, for the last eight years, I've been president of the Mountain Meadows Homeowners Association. And I've lived at 812 for 10 years. And when that bridge was proposed, Mountain Meadows was adamantly in favor of it. And we still are in favor of it. The comments and criticisms of that bridge were from the residents primarily on the east side of Bear Creek, on the city side, where the traffic would be coming through their neighborhood. It was not from neighbors in the west side, which is Mountain Meadows and now Kestrel Park. So, I just want to say, we are still in favor of the bridge.
Thank you for your clarifications. Yes.
When I was interrupting Mark, I was commenting that he was including Nandina as a way to get out, a new way to get out. Nandina doesn't go anywhere. It goes up to Plum Ridge, and you have to go to Mountain Meadows Drive or Fair Oaks. So, there are still, at this point, only two ways to get in and out of this whole neighborhood down the hill. So, you know, and Mountain Meadows is a huge evacuation magnet for in-town. So, all of us down there are going to have a hell of a time getting onto, onto Mountain if, if we're evacuated.
Then, then you need to speak up to the council and get yourself on their agenda to talk about the bridge.
You betcha.
Chair Verner?
Okay.
Chair Verner?
Thank you.
As we held the public comment, and the applicant has an opportunity to respond to any public comment received, I'm not sure if you were going to offer that to the applicant at this time. But I think it would be prudent, given two other people spoke.
Yes.
Outside of public testimony.
Yes. Do you want to, would you like to speak again? Okay. Okay. Therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing and close the public record. We are now in deliberations. Planning Commissioners, what do you want to do? Further questions? Further comments? Go ahead, Russell.
I just have a quick question for staff about alleys. So, with a 20-foot alley, we have a 12-foot paved area. And then, we have 4-foot of buffer on each side. What is the buffer typically comprised of?
Mark had a slide earlier that had that section of code, and I believe it says either gravelled or land, is there a landscaping option?
Low ground cover.
Low ground cover. So, it's intended to be a pedestrian reprieve, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments? Would somebody like to put forward a motion?
But before that happens, I'd just like to call attention to those two suggested conditions of approval that I had the slide on for, to address the removal of Area 7.
Can you put that slide back up?
Yes, I can.
You can look at that. In my opinion, those two conditions are needed, and should be, we should be including them when we, if there's, if there's a motion to approve this. Susan?
So, I do move to approve the Kestrel Park Phase 3, Areas 4, 5, and 6 outline plan for a 12-lot performance standards option.
13.
Sorry.
13.
13, sorry.
Sorry.
13. Sorry. Need better contacts, obviously. Subdivision, site design review and a variance for driveway width on Lot 16 of Kestrel Park subdivision, with conditions as proposed by staff, including the new conditions put forth by staff tonight, being those two.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there further deliberation? Great. Okay. Greg, do you have anything?
I have no questions. I support the motion, and I'm just waiting for the vote.
Okay. Thank you. Michael, will you do a roll call?
Commissioner Parkinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner McCracken-Jane?
Aye.
Commissioner Nowor?
Aye.
Chair Verner?
Aye. Thank you very much. The motion passes. And thank you all for your participation. Okay, we are moving on to open discussion, part of the agenda. Does anybody have anything to discuss?
I have one item.
Okay, go for it.
It's, it's, well, wait a second.
Excuse me.
Ladies and gentlemen, if we can be mindful that the proceedings are still underway, we do especially thank you for attending tonight, but ask that you continue your conversations in the lobby and in the hall. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Your participation is very much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you.
She definitely knows what she's doing. Okay, let's continue our meeting. And Doug, you had something, some comments?
Just, just wanted to, to highlight something that occurred to me as I was going through this, these documents, that there is a conflict, appears to be a conflict, between city code right now and what the Department of Public Works would like to have. And so that's-
In terms of street standards?
In this case, it was the driveway width. It strikes me, and I could be wrong, I'm no expert in this space, that if Public Works wants a different standard, then they need to advocate for a change in the code. They would have to go through the usual approval processes. They cannot simply override what we have as far as Ashland Municipal Code. Even though it may make sense, they have to do the work in order to get it onto the books. My, my opinion on this.
I would agree with you. I, I think there is a conflict, and I think that would be the way to go about resolving it.
Yeah.
If, if Public Works, because I, I don't think Public Works, they might think they have the ability, but I don't think they really do have the ability to just deny a permit because it's smaller than what they would prefer. And even though that smaller number is in code.
Right, right. Everybody else gets to, you know, abide by the code.
Right, right. And they should too, yeah. So, okay.
So I don't know, you know, how we will take that back into Public Works, other than making a recommendation from Planning Commission that this be resolved.
We could do that.
Yeah.
I mean, this discussion clearly highlights the importance of the transportation system plan. So could you remind us what the timetable is and what the intent is in terms of linkage to the Planning Commission so that we can share?
I, I think- I was going to start by saying the linkage part. And Derek can answer the timing question better than I. The transportation system plan is an adopted component of, a technical supporting document of our comprehensive plan. So adopting it is a legislative process. The Planning Commission advises council on a legislative process that amends the comprehensive plan. So it would be presented before you for a formal recommendation to the City Council. And I know that we received grant funding to do a new transportation system plan. And I'm not sure of the timing, but maybe Derek is.
The most recent timing I've heard is that it would start early to mid 2025 and probably complete in 2026. And the anticipation is, because state grant funding is pretty limited, that the cities are supposed to play a bigger role in the public engagement process in these, so it wouldn't be funded through the grant. And our expectation is that the Planning Commission and planning staff would probably take up a good part of that role with the grant. So we'd have a bigger role in that, which makes sense because this is the first transportation system plan that's really supposed to interface with the climate-friendly areas and the climate-friendly and equitable communities rules. So once we've adopted those areas, we're supposed to be planning on how to identify the gaps and how to fill them.
But as I recall, when Linda Adams and, I forget who else was with her, came to, you know, and much to their credit, to introduce the concept that the planning process was starting and their desire to engage with the Planning Commission, that there was interest in doing more than the bare minimum, which would be the legislative part of it. So I just was curious as to whether anything had developed in that regard. And, you know, would also observe, as someone who lives even further away from those egress points, but in that same corridor, you know, again, post Alameda, we have a set of concerns that, you know, weren't considered last time around either.
Yeah, I do recall Scott Flurry, Public Works Director, and Linda Peterson Adams, the Transportation Chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee, talked about evacuation planning as being a new priority in the transportation system plan. As far as the creation of a public engagement plan, I've not seen that component yet. I have been privy in working with Scott to the scope of work presented by ODOT in terms of funding the transportation system plan. And they have developed a generalized scope of work. And as Derek mentioned, it defers a lot of the public engagement process to the City of Ashland. So I think we will have the ability to engage the public a little more directly than would be through just the ODOT grant. So I believe that the, the legal reviews of that grant by ODOT and the City of Ashland Public Works Department have been ongoing for the last month. So it's moving along, and that is step one, to get that grant funding in place so that we can move forward with the project.
And the grant-
And I can check with Scott Flurry about the public engagement plan and the timing.
The grant funding would hire a consultant to write the plan?
Yeah, the, the project is a rather costly project to do a transportation system plan. And, you know, I don't have estimates, but it is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we were fortunate to get an ODOT grant to facilitate that. And I think Department of Land Conservation and Development, are they? Or is it just ODOT?
I think they may be jointly helping.
Yeah. The state, in either scenario, is going to be assisting Ashland in paying for the vast majority of the cost of the planning process.
And I think 88 cities are subject to climate-friendly and equitable communities rules and have to adopt a, a new transportation system plan. Ashland is one of 12 cities that got grants to do that. So the others are kind of left to handle it on their own.
Well, good for you guys for applying. Okay, lovely, wonderful. Doug?
Related, my question earlier on the LID, is there an avenue for the gentleman who was just saying he's been, you know, president of thing for 18 years now, to move forward on trying to get activity around the building of defining what the bridge would be and getting it built that could happen before transportation planning is done? Because transportation planning is going to be two years off, easy. And Malibu was on fire this morning.
Do you want me? Okay. It would have to be in the CIP. So in order to address that, the next budget cycle, '25, '27, will be starting in the spring. And so that project would need to be in the CIP within the two-year span. And I think that that would be a very heavy lift, timing-wise. It's always worth asking the question, but the, the first step would be budget and CIP plan. And those are coming due in the very near term, like in the next two months.
Oh, great.
So you got all the, the runway.
Yeah.
But yeah, those, those are your first two, like if you're traversing the Erie Canal, those are the first two locks, and then you would go on from there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'll admit to being, you know, completely unfamiliar with the, with the concept of how the LID. I know BID, I assume it's very similar. But if there's a bank account of money already in place because the residents have been paying into it all along, and if grant money is secured to pretty much cover the majority, if not all, of the construction, does it have to wait that long?
So I, I can probably address two of those points.
Yeah.
There is no local improvement district. We, as a condition of approval of projects, will have that property owner sign in favor of the formation of a local improvement district.
Yeah.
So there is no bank of money that has been collected. It would be, once the capital improvement project is defined, an area of impact would be defined as the local improvement district, which would include property owners on all sides. Some of them may have had their home built in 1970. Some of them might have been built in 2024. They'd all be included in a local improvement district. The capital improvement cost for the improvement, whether it's just a street or a bridge, would be determined. And then there would be a share that the city was funding. And the remainder would be divided per the local improvement district as something that would then have to be paid into.
So my misconception was the, thinking that the LID was actually already in place because the residents had been there and that this had been collected all along.
Correct. There's been no funds collected for the LID. They'd be collected after its formation.
Like I said, I'm not familiar with the, with the, the whole thing there, but it was just-
And I'd also say there's no grant fund. That was expended elsewhere. So.
New grants.
New grants, most definitely.
Yeah, it's, it's just the frustration low, but, but nonetheless there of, we're, we're talking process here in the way of doing something that, that we might want to have done yesterday. And that's unfortunate.
I would also say for those who are still tuned in and watching, that there would be a public process around that, the creation of that district. And so there's a lot of input along the way. It isn't simply that it is declared, done, and then enacted. There is a lot, a lot of input along that process.
Does public input include residents outside the LID area?
Excellent question. But I think if you have a public hearing, the public is welcome.
Anybody can talk.
Yeah.
There's the ability for members of the district to remonstrate, which means they essentially file a written remonstrance and in so doing delay the process automatically for six months.
An agreement not to litigate it.
Yeah. So if they oppose it, it, it automatically delays it six months, which just when you're dealing with grant funding and those things can be a problem. That's why when we have people sign in favor, they're not only agreeing to financially participate, but they're giving up their right to remonstrate for the formation of the LID.
And you want to leave this body? You want to go someplace else? You don't want to stay here and learn?
I think it's been a great amount of knowledge and, and fun sitting part of this body. So I greatly appreciate the people putting up with here and some of my crazy questions.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else to say? If not, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Happy holidays. And no meeting on the 24th. Correct, correct.